May I settle down? May I untuck?
Good morning, guys.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
The first regular session of the year 2025 is now called to order. Please rise for the opening prayer to be led by Honorable Samuel Rodriguez, followed by the National Anthem, Provincial hymn, and City hymn.
Okay, uh, Happy New Year, Satanan.
Happy New Year.
Uh, let us pause for a while to feel the presence of our Lord. Almighty and loving God, as we gathered here today for this regular session of the Sangguniang Panglungsod of Mati, we come before with hearts full of gratitude. Thank you for guiding us through the past years and for blessing us with a gift of a new year. We humbly ask for your wisdom and guidance in our discussions and decisions today. May its action and resolutions be rooted in fairness, integrity, and the desire to serve people of Mati. Bless our, bless our city, its leaders and its citizens with peace, prosperity, and unity throughout the year ahead. Strengthen us in our purpose, inspire us to work together for the common good, and may our efforts bring glory in your name. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
(Singing) Kayang matili, pelas ng sila tanan. Ang lab ng puso, sakit din po'y buhay. Lupang himiram, tulad ka ng matiting sa manlulupig. Di ka pasisikin sa halata't bundok, sa simoy at sa lawit mong bahaw. May ginagang tulad at awit sa paglayang minamahal. Ang hisnat ng watawat po'y tagumpay na natingin. Ang bituin at araw niya, talan pa may di magtitilim. Lupan ang araw ng walhatin pagsinta, buhay ang langit sa pilipin ko. Ang itligaya dapat may mangkaapi ang mga tayang dahil sa'yo. O probesya na minamahal, sangsubangan ang daba. Manuwa kau na madayaw, ya na guyun yang utaw. Malipayon kay palangga kau ng Diyos. Matabayang kalupaan mo, yang tanuma bunga hul. Dagat muma nga suba, maday kayang hisga. Kabuhian kawilihan ang kanan. Umahan na daba oriental, langit mo mapawaay. Yang kabutayan, yang kapatakad, maya maday magandahay. Masdi hain pa kami kumatuh, kami muuli anikan mo. Gabu na bi na daba wenyo, yang pagsirbi sangkatdawan mo. Palangga si ganun mati, langit mo di makati. Sangkat kayang, sangkat kapakan, sangkat agad ang kaway kayuwan. Makanan yang manjeritay, kayang paliput na gandaan. Sangkatdawan yang sangmukat, ina-iyan yang rimahan. Taga mati mati na baro, taga mati mati na dadu. Taga mati mati na huru, yang taga mati mati na. Taga mati mati na daru, taga mati mati na maru. Taga mati mati na hul, sa Diyos labang magkagagahu. Taga mati madayaw, taga mati kami.
Mr. Secretary, you may proceed to the roll call.
Honorable Samuel Rodriguez, Honorable Delphine Miones, Honorable Tara Mari Rabat Gaita, On Siklib, Honorable Sina Princess Campos, absent, Honorable Edmondopang Junior, Honorable Abelino Capinha Junior, Honorable Arman Valera, Honorable Sandra Paul Alcantara, Honorable Jerome Yang Hirang, Honorable Roelio Pabio, Honorable Baudileum Miones, Honorable Daniel Makaubos, Honorable Tomas Sibilleno, Honorable Lorenzo Leon G. Rabat.
Present.
Coro, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Please proceed to the next item.
Reading and consideration of the previous minutes of the regular session dated December 26, 2024, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any corrections with their previous minutes? Honorable Pabio is recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Advance happy Valentine's.
Advance happy Valentine's.
We have a simple correction from page four, line two, from forty-five to four.
Note that on the correction, Honorable Pabio, thank you. Please take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any corrections with their previous minutes? If none, Honorable Miones is recognized. Yeah, Honorable Capinha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning and Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Mr. Chair, since the committee chairperson on rules is not around during the previous regular session, this manifestation, Mr. Chair, would like to move for the adoption of the minutes with the consideration of the observation of Honorable Roger Pabio. I move for the adoption of the minutes of the previous regular session dated December 26, 2024, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Capinha for the adoption of our previous minutes dated December 26, 2024. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, these minutes are adopted. By the way, belated happy birthday and concejal Dodo Miones, December 24. Please proceed to the next item.
For question, are no guests invited? Privilege or other reports, observations?
Thank you. Privilege are set upon us. Are there any reports, observations, requests by the members? Honorable Pabio.
Thank you again, Honorable Presiding Officer. Uh, from Communication Number 05 Series of 2025 and Communication Number 8 Series of 2025, I ask permission from my colleague that this communication certified urgent from the Local Chief Executive to be tackled during an assigned business without suspending house rules.
Thank you. There are requests by the Honorable Pabio that Communications 05 and 08 Certified Urgent be tackled under unassigned business without the need to suspend house rules. Should there be no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Privilege are set upon us. Are there any requests still by the members? Honorable Alcantara.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning to everyone.
Morning.
Mr. Chair, this representation as the Chairman of the Committee on Gender and Family and Human Rights would like to manifest that the Resolution Letter A and Letter B under proposed resolution in today's session will be tackled under unassigned business on suspended house rules, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Alcantara that proposed Resolutions A and B be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Privilege are set upon us. Honorable Capinha is recognized.
Thank you again, Honorable Chairman. Mr. Chair, from the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Approp, Approp, Appropriation. I have heard referrals. Communication Number 02, Communication Number 04, and Communication Number 07, Mr. Chair, though not signified urgent, but I believe there is an urgency to act upon this request because this is a barangay budget concern. I would like to request from the members of this August body that these communications be tackled under unassigned business during suspended house rules, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Capinha that Communications 02, 04, 07 be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Capinha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, also from the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, I have here one urgent communication. Communication Number 03. Uh, Mr. Chair, I would like to request from the members of this August body that this communication be tackled under unassigned business without suspending the house rules since the request is urgent in nature, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
How about make Resolution?
C.
C.
Cell card?
Resolution C. And Resolution Letter C, proposed Resolution Letter C, Mr. Chair, be tackled under unassigned business without suspending the house rules.
Thank you. There are requests by the Honorable Capinha that Communications 03 be tackled under unassigned business without the need to suspend house rules as well as Resolution Number, a Letter C, be tackled under unassigned business under suspended house rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any more requests under privilege R? If there are none, please proceed to the next item, Mr. Secretary.
For proposed ordinance for first reading, authored by Honorable Samuel Rodriguez, proposed City Ordinance Number 623 Series of 2025, An Ordinance Amending Section 25, License to Operate Fish Pans, Fish Pens, Fish cages, Fish traps, and other structures for the culture of fish and other aquatic species under City Ordinance Number 406 Series of 2020. An ordinance defining all laws on fisheries and aquatic resources, rules, and regulations of the City of Mati, referred to the proponent. For proposed Resolution, Resolution A, authored by the Honorable Alcantara, a Resolution Adapting Republic Act Number 11862, Expanded Anti-Trafficking in Persons Act of 2022, otherwise known as an Act strengthening the policies of anti-trafficking in persons, providing penalties for its violation, and appropriating funds thereof, amending for the purpose of Republic Act Number 9208 or the Anti-Trafficking in Persons Act of 2023 and other special laws, localizing the approach and implementation thereof without prejudice of passing an ordinance. As manifested by the Honorable Alcantara, this will discuss under unassigned business suspended house rules. Same with proposed Resolution B, to be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules, authored by Honorable Alcantara, a Resolution Adapting Republic Act Number 9262 or an Act defining violence against, against women and their children, providing for the protective measures for victims, prescribing penalties therefore, and for other purposes, localizing the approach and implementation thereof without prejudice of passing an ordinance. And last, proposed Resolution authored by the Honorable Abelino Capinha, Chairman of Committee of Finance, a Resolution declaring the appropriation for transportation allowance under the personal services allocation of the Office of Sangguniang Panglungsod in particular of the following SP members: Honorable Samuel Rodriguez, Honorable Delphine Miones, Honorable Sandra Paul Alcantara, Honorable Arman Valera, and Honorable Jerome Yang Hirang, in the amount of 510,000 pesos as savings and to be reverted to the unappropriated balance of fund, referred to the proponent and to be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. For communications and messages, Communication Number 01 Series 2024, from Purong barangay Roger Andan o barangay Buso, addressed to the Honorable Lorenzo Leon G. Rabat, City Vice Mayor to the Honorable members of Sangguniang Panglungsod, regarding, regarding various barangay ordinances. Barangay Ordinance Number 14 Series of 2024, An Ordinance Enhancing the Peace and Order of barangay Buso to the functionality of the established security outpost in barangay Buso, City of Mati. Barangay Ordinance Number 15 Series of 2024, An Ordinance Mandating A益 contribution of 100 pesos per household in barangay Buso, City of Mati for sustainable operation and maintenance of barangay water supply and distribution system. Barangay Ordinance Number 16 Series of 2024, An Ordinance Revising the Tax Code Ordinance of barangay Buso, City of Mati, Dava Oriental. Barangay Ordinance Number 17 Series of 2024, An Ordinance Establishing Comprehensive Regulations for the entry and operation of internet traders and service providers to safeguard resident safety and community integrity. And last, barangay Ordinance Number 18 Series of 2024, An Ordinance Establishing the 31st day of October of every year as Indigenous People Day in barangay Buso, City of Mati, Dava Oriental, to honor and celebrate the cultural heritage and traditions of the Mandaya and the Kalagan Kaagan tribes, and mandating the wearing of traditional attire by all tribal council members on this day. All referred to the Chairman Committee on Oversight, Ordinances, and Legal Matters, the Honorable Sina Princess Campos. Communication Number 02 Series 2024, First Endorsement Power City Budget Officer, Imaya Bagaidimpas, addressed to the Honorable members of Sangguniang Panglungsod regarding pre-reviewed Sangguniang Kabataan Annual Budget for calendar year 2025 o barangay badas, the city, to be operative. As manifested by the Chairman Committee on Finance, this will be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. Same with, and the Communication Number 03, An Urgent Letter from the Local Chief Executive, Honorable Michelle N. Rabat, requesting the Honorable members of Sangguniang Panglungsod for passage of a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to sign for and behalf the City Government of Mati, the attached three compromise agreements between Mr. Abonjo S. Kamwa and the City Government of Mati for payment of various real property taxes, referred to the Chairman Committee on Finance, Honorable Capinha, and this will be discussed under unassigned business without need to suspending house rules considering that it is certified urgent. Communication Number 04, First Endorsement from Mrs. Imaya Bagaidimpas, City Budget Officer, addressed to the Honorable members of Sangguniang Panglungsod regarding pre-reviewed annual budget for calendar year 2023 o barangay Luban, the city to be, to be operative, referred to the Honorable Capinha, Chairman Committee on Finance, to be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. Communication Number 05 Series 2025, An Urgent Letter from the Honorable Michelle N. Rabat, City Mayor, addressed to the Honorable members of Sangguniang Panglungsod, requesting for a passage of a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to sign for and behalf the City Government of Mati, the attached contract of services between Dr. Christina Therese S. Katbagan and the City Government of Mati as primary care physician from January 2, 2025 to December 31, 2025, referred to Chairman Committee on Health and Sanitation, the Honorable Roger Pabio. As manifested by the Honorable Pabio, this will be discussed under unassigned business. Communication Number 06, Series 2025, Letter from Ms. Jean L. Babini, barangay Matiau Water Works and Sanitation Association, Incorporated, President, addressed to Honorable Lorenzo Leon Ezo Rabat, City Vice Mayor, subject request for Sangguniang Panglungsod, Panglungsod support through a resolution endorsing the barangay Matiau Water Works and Sanitation Association, Incorporated, proposed bulk water supply project for barangay Matiau, the city, referred to Chairman Committee on Energy and Water Utilities, the Honorable Arman Valera. Communication Number 07, Series 2025, First Endorsement from Mrs. Imaya Bagaidimpas, City Budget Officer, addressed to the Honorable members of Sangguniang Panglungsod regarding pre-reviewed barangay supplemental budget Number 03 for calendar 2024 o barangay badas, the city to be operative, referred to the Honorable Capinha, Chairman Committee of Finance, to be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. And last, communication, Mr. Chair. Communication Number 08, Series 2025, An Urgent Letter from Honorable Michelle N. Rabat, our City Mayor, addressed to the Honorable members of Sangguniang Panglungsod, requesting for a passage of a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to sign for and behalf the City Government of Mati, the memorandum agreement between the Integrated Clinics of Otolary Gynecology, Head and Neck Surgery Incorporated, and the City Government of Mati for the newborn hearing test to all infants delivered in our safe birthing facilities, referred to Chairman Committee on Health, the Honorable Pabio. As manifested by the Honorable Pabio, this will be discussed under unassigned business without need of suspending house rules. That's all for communications, Mr. Chair. No committee report for calendar business, no unfinished business. For business per day, for second reading, no proposed measures for proposed resolutions and ordinance. And for unassigned business, we have urgent communications, Mr. Chair.
Thank you to properly facilitate the urgent communications. Honorable Miones is recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
Mr. Chair, in order to address the urgent request of the mayor, I move for the conversion of this August body into a committee as a whole.
Thank you. There's a request. There's a motion by the Honorable Miones for the conversion of this body into a committee as a whole. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, we are now converted into a committee as a whole. Honorable Pabio is recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Communication Number 05 Series of 2025 and Communication Number 8 Series of 2025 open for discussion.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding the two communications presented by Honorable Pabio. If there are none, please proceed.
I move for the adoption the committee, the two communication number 05 and 08 as committee recommendation as all, as I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Pabio for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for Communications 05 and 08 respectively. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, these motions are carried. Honorable Capinha is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, Honorable members of this August body, the floor now is open for any discussion queries for Communication Number 3-2025, an urgent communication from our Local Chief Executive.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding Communication 03 as presented by the Honorable Capinha. Are there any? If there are none, please proceed.
Thank you. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation as requested in Communication Number 3-2025. Mr. Chair, I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Capinha for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the said communication. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Miones is recognized.
I move for the conversion of this August body back to plenary.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the conversion of this body back into plenary, seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, we are now back into plenary, and Honorable Pabio is recognized. You may lump sum the passage, Honorable Pabio.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. I move for the passage, Resolution Authorizing Honorable Michelle N. Rabat, City Mayor to sign for and behalf of the City Government of Mati the contract of services between Dr. Christina Therese S. Katbagan as primary care physician from January 2, 2025 to December 31, 2025. I move for a passage, Resolution Authorizing Honorable Michelle N. Rabat, City Mayor, to sign for in behalf of the city government of Mati, the memorandum of agreement between the Integrated Clinics of the otolarygeology, head and neck surgery, for the newborn hearing test to all infant delivered in the safe birthing facilities. I move for the approval of two resolution, I do so move, Honorable Presiding Official.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Fabio for the passage of two resolutions. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, these motions are carried. Honorable Capinha is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With your permission, I am going to have a lump sum passage of three resolutions, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I now move for a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Michelle Enrabat, to enter into and sign for in behalf of the city government of Mati, the compromise agreement with Mr. Abunjo S. Kamwa for the payment of real property tax delinquency in the amount of 136,590 pesos. I now move for the passage of the resolution. I now move for a passage of a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Michelle Enrabat, to enter into and sign for in behalf of the city government of Mati, the compromise agreement with Mr. Abunjo S. Kamwa for the payment of real property tax delinquency in the amount of 21,077 pesos and 36 centavos. I now move for a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Michelle Enrabat, to enter into and sign for in behalf of the city government of Mati, the compromise agreement with Mr. Abunjo S. Kamwa for the payment of real property tax delinquency in the amount of 290,439 pesos and 90 centavos. Mr. Chair, I now move for the passage of the three resolutions, I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Capinha for the passage of three resolutions as just stated. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, these motions are carried. We are done with all the urgent communications. To facilitate the non-urgent ones, Honorable Miones is recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I move for the suspension of the rules. At the same time, the conversion of this august body into a committee as a whole.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the suspension of House rules. At the same time, the conversion of this body into a committee as a whole. Members to second his motion? Seconded by all. We are now converted into a committee as a whole. House rules are now suspended, and Honorable Alcantara is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This representation is now open for any discussion relative to the Resolution Letter A and Letter B, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding Reso A and B as presented by Honorable Alcantara. If there are none, please proceed.
Mr. Chair, I now move for the adoption of the, as the committee as a whole, of recommendation for a passage of the resolution under Letter A and Letter B of proposed resolution, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Alcantara for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendations for Resolutions A and B respectively. Members to second his motion? Seconded by all. If there are no objections, these motions are carried. Honorable Capinha is recognized. For Communications 247 and Resolution Letter C.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the floor now is open for discussions for Communication Number 2, Communication Number 4, and Communication Number 7.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding the communications presented by Honorable Capinha. If there are none, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation as requested in Communication Number 2, Communication Number 4, Communication Number 7, all Series of 2025, Mr. Chair, I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Capinha for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for Communications 2, 4, and 7. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. Please proceed, Honorable Capinha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for proposed Resolution Letter C. The floor now is open for any discussions, queries?
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding Resolution C as presented by Honorable Capinha. If there are none, please proceed.
Thank you. I now move for a adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation as requested in the proposed resolution, item Letter C, Mr. Chair, I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Capinha for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for proposed Resolution C. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Miones is recognized.
I move for the conversion of this august body back to plenary.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the conversion of this body back into plenary, seconded by all. If there are no objections, we are now back into plenary. Honorable Alcantara is recognized. You may lump sum the passage, Honorable Alcantara.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'll move for the passage of the two resolution under the Resolution A and Letter B, Mr. Chair, I so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Alcantara for the passage of two resolutions as stated. Members to second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, these motions are carried. Honorable Capinha is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Shall I have a lump sum passage of resolutions, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. I now move for a resolution declaring the annual budget for year 2023 of barangay Luban to be operative. I now move for a resolution declaring the supplemental budget number 3 for calendar year 2024 of barangay Badas to be operative. I now move for a resolution declaring the SK annual budget for calendar year 2025 of barangay Badas to be operative. I now move for the passage of the three resolutions, I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Capinha for the passage of three resolutions as stated. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, these motions are carried. Please proceed, Honorable Capinha.
Thank you. For proposed Resolution Letter C, Mr. Chair, product of just converted the committee as a whole, I now move for a resolution declaring the appropriation for transportation allowance under personal services allocation of the offices of the Sangguniang Panglungsod, in particular of the following SP members: Honorable Samuel M. Rodriguez, Honorable Delphine B. Miones, Honorable Sandra Paul B. Alcantara, Honorable Armand Talen Valera, and Honorable Jerome C. Dayang Hirang in the amount of 510,000 pesos as savings and to be reverted to the unappropriated balance of fund. Mr. Chair, I now move for the passage of this resolution, I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Capinha for the passage of a resolution. Members to second his motion? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. We are done with all requested communications. Honorable Miones is recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I move for the lifting of the suspended House rules.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the lifting of suspended House rules, seconded by all. If there are no objections, the suspended House rules are now lifted. What is the next item, Mr. Secretary?
No proposed measure, no proposed resolution and ordinance for third reading. Announcement, other matters?
Are there any announcements by the members? Honorable Capinha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, this is from the Committee on Good Government, Public Ethics, and Accountabilities. I just want to have an advanced information basin umaabtanta sa required time, no? To address this administrative case filed within the Sangguniang against Punong barangay Serino Salazar, Errol Aquino, and Mr. Jason Ray Repisada. The committee is set to schedule a in-bank meeting for the hearing on June 22, 2025 at 2 o'clock in the afternoon. So kindly check your schedules because we need to be complete during this time.
Wednesday, what is 22?
January 22. Wednesday.
Can all be present during those dates? Thank you, Honorable Capinha, for the advance notice. Actually, nagpadala ng tagsulat kang Punong barangay Salazar and Kagawad, um, Errol Dayang Hirang, ah, Errol Aquino and Mr. Repisada. They received the letter and okay sila sa January 22 na hearing.
Pati ang complainants ba'yo?
Pati ang complainants. So if all can be present at 2 o'clock PM on January 22. Thank you, Honorable Capinha. Nag-end bank na ta, nag-end bank na ta na, diba? Ah, hearing na na, hearing proper. So are there any announcements by the members? Honorable Rodriguez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Food, Agriculture, the Committee on Food, Agriculture, Fisheries, and Aquatic Resources will conduct committee hearing on January 15, 2025, 9:00 AM at the exposition hall relative to the proposed passage of the City Ordinance Number 623, Series of 2025, and ordinance amending Section 25 of the City Ordinance Number 406, Series of 2020. Members of this committee are Honorable Tara Marie Rabat Gayta, Vice Chairman, Honorable Campos member, Honorable Makaobos member, and Honorable Valera member.
Thank you for the information, Honorable Rodriguez. Letters will be sent to their respective offices. Are there any announcements by, still by the members? If there are none, please proceed with the next item, Mr. Secretary.
Announcement for the closing prayer by the Honorable Rodriguez.
Thank you. Honorable Rodriguez is recognized.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, ang skaid, before the closing adjournment, ang iunikuns Jimbo'y piysta daw ng
Magsay-say?
Sa magsay-say, but sa may una-ho na'to, ang piysta o ganyan committee hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, before we end this regular session, we would like to thank Councilor Dodok Miones for the snacks for today's session. Thank you, and belated happy birthday.
Okay, uh, I now move for the adjournment of this meeting until January 14. I do so move, Mr. Presiding Official. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we conclude this regular session of the Sangguniang Panglungsod of Mati, we thank you for your presence and guidance throughout our discussions. May the decisions and plans made today serve the best interest of our city and its people. Grant us the strength to carry out our responsibilities with integrity and dedication. Bless our leaders, our community, and our endeavors as we continue to work for the progress and unity of Mati. May we leave this place with renewed purpose and spirit of collaboration. Keep us safe as we go our separate ways. And may we always seek your will in all that we do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Session is adjourned.